We'll call the to order. Time is now twelve thirty-three and a quorum of the board is present. The Board of Education meeting for August 11, 2015 is therefore called to order. And we will begin with public participation in the board meeting. Marilyn?
I have two forms, and if anybody else has a form, I'd be happy to have it so we can do public participation. The first one's Christopher Erickson and the second one's Anna Peterson. So Christopher, if you come to the table, and I know you have some people that are going to come with you.
Yep.
And I will let you know and remind others that you'll have five minutes to present, and the board does not engage in conversation during this time. They may contact you at a later date, but that's in their bylaws. Eileen?
Except for one thing, which is one of those people is my second cousin once removed.
Oh. Eileen, please introduce your second cousin once removed.
Now, why'd you remove him? Never mind.
Whenever you're ready, we're ready.
Okay, great. All right, thank you to the board and Superintendent Wiston for allowing us the opportunity to address you on behalf of our students and colleagues. We are a group of educators from the Ann Arbor area and part of the Teacher Leadership Initiative. The initiative is a collaboration between the Center for Teacher Quality, National Board for Professional Teaching Standards, and the National Education Association with the goals of supporting teacher leaders to collaboratively advance the profession and support teaching and learning. We are representing our own views from all three levels of education, pre-K through 12th grade, elementary, middle, and high school. We are here to advocate for increasing the number of nationally board-certified teachers in Michigan in order to raise student achievement through higher expectations and increase professionalism of teachers. As the state continues to confront challenges in student achievement, we believe that implementation of a long-term and financially viable system of certifying Michigan teachers will result in increased student learning and growth. Teachers who complete the certification process have increased content knowledge, instructional effectiveness, and take on greater leadership roles in their schools and districts. There is a correlation between nationally board-certified teachers and student achievement. Teachers who are nationally board-certified increase student achievement at a higher rate than non-certified teachers and tend to stay longer in the teaching profession. Students benefit from teachers who are board-certified. Many studies show that student success improves when taught by board-certified teachers. In 2012, Harvard's Strategic Data Project found that students in Los Angeles Unified District gained roughly the equivalent of two months of additional instruction in math and one month in English Language Arts from being taught by board-certified teachers compared to students taught by non-board certified teachers. Several studies found that the impact is even more positive for minority students and lower-income students. Board-certified teachers are thoughtful in lesson planning, reflective in teaching practices, and use researched methods that are increasingly effective when teaching students. As of 2002, some members of this board advocated for increasing the number of nationally board certified teachers in its Ensuring Excellent Educators Task Force report. It is commendable that the state has focused on certifying K through 3rd grade teachers in priority schools. It is also important that all teachers throughout Michigan are financially supported in order to pursue and complete national board certification. While in the past the state offered a grant subsidy that helped teachers cover some of the cost, the Michigan Department of Education has not had federal funds since 2004 for this purpose. Reinstateing and expanding this funding for Michigan educators will allow teachers a financially viable way to reach the high expectations of professionalism while increasing student achievement. Teachers benefit from the certification process. Board certification provides teachers with the ability to collaborate with others, hone their craft of teaching through reflection, and to develop themselves as leaders. By empowering teacher leaders, the state of Michigan would invest in their students by investing in their teachers. The state would assure that students from all backgrounds receive high-quality instruction from teachers who are dedicated to the reflective process at the highest level. In the last year, the state of Michigan had seven teachers achieve national board certification. Compare this to 23 in Massachusetts, 168 in Virginia, and 528 in North Carolina. Each state's overall number of certified teachers provides an even starker contrast when compared to the estimated total number of students. For every nationally board-certified teacher in Michigan, there are about 3,937 students. In Massachusetts, 1,515 students. In Virginia, 410 students. And in North Carolina, 73 students. Michigan can and must do better for its students. Reinstateing a grant subsidy and developing a strong network of nationally board-certified teachers in Michigan makes sense. Neighboring states such as Illinois and Wisconsin financially support their teachers through grant subsidies as Michigan once did. This state, teachers, and most importantly, the students of Michigan will benefit. To become a top-10 state, Michigan can create more awareness of national boards to all teachers in a very purpose-driven way, implement accessible support for those interested in any stage of the process, and provide financial support to those committed to certification. As the state of Michigan continues to work on raising achievement, robust and financial support of national board certification is a solid research-based investment. Thank you for considering our efforts to raise the teaching profession and ultimately raise student achievement in the state of Michigan. I'm Chris Erickson, Leslie Bullock, and Christopher Thomas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here and sharing with us.
Thank you.
I'd like to find out where they teach.
Can you tell us quickly where you teach?
I'm sorry?
Where do you teach?
Where do you teach?
We all teach in Ann Arbor. I teach in the elementary at Angel Elementary.
I teach at Huron High School.
And I'm at Scarlet Middle School.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Anna Peterson.
Sorry, that was biased, but I've been saying for two years. I'm going to speak quickly, please. I want to get it all in, so I hope everybody understands everything I'm going to say. All right, do you want to tell me to start or do I start?
Whenever you're ready.
Whenever I'm ready, okay. Good afternoon, my name is Anna Peterson, and I've been a teacher for 30 years. I've been a teacher for 30 years with 28 of those years at Rio Elementary in Lansing. Rio was once a golden apple school. It is now a priority school and wrongfully so. When Rio was deemed a priority school, our 3rd graders were ranked near the top of the district with their MEEP scores. This past year, after taking the M step, our 3rd graders were ranked number one in the ELA, number two on the math in the district. The consultants from the MDE and IST assigned to our school all agree, from what they have seen, that we are not a failing school as our status would lead people to believe. Considering all the challenges our teachers face daily, Rio is an amazing school. I am here today to ask all of you to spend time in my school and/or schools like my school to truly understand what we need to be successful. Also, I would like you to urge our governor, lieutenant governor, and all those involved in policymaking to do the same. I think when you walk a mile in our shoes, you will see how blanket statements about bad teachers in the poorest schools and failing schools simply isn't real life. If you were to spend time in the trenches, you would see the challenges that make teaching in high-poverty schools more difficult than teaching in more affluent districts. Challenges such as student attendance. You can have the very best teachers and programs, but if students are often tardy, absent, moving about the district in and out of the district, as many as four times in one school year, those students are bound to struggle. I don't know if it has been approved, but it is my understanding that the Parent Responsibility Act designed to keep children in school by using government assistance as a reinforcement is being met with some resistance and criticism. I, for one, support it because you cannot just, again, hold teachers accountable for a child's progress when they're not in school. Another challenge being faced by teachers in my school district is the elimination of specialty teachers. Because of the elimination of specialty positions, teachers must not only find time to make plans for the core subjects, but they must now study the written lessons for art, music, and P, plus find time to gather the materials needed for those lessons. Much, if not all, of this planning is happening beyond the school day. While this is a challenge to our teachers, it is unfair to our students and a step backwards in ensuring their success. There are numerous studies that attest to the success of the strong arts program as a means to prevent the disengagement that typically proceeds dropping out. The bottom line of my speech today is to ask all of you to spend time in the schools, as I said earlier, mandate that art, music, and P must be taught by specialists, and hold parents accountable. It is unbelievably unfair to say that hard-working, passionately dedicated teachers could lose their jobs over things they cannot control, like student attendance, untreated medical issues such as ADHD, asthma, and oppositional defiant disorder, to name a few. And parents refuse to come to conferences, help their child with homework, and are more concerned with leaving very young children home alone so they can take selfies of themselves at the bar and posting on social media, and their efforts to get someone to go on the Maury Show to prove that they're the parent of the newborn child. I have more stories that clearly illustrate the unbelievable challenges that teachers face on a daily basis that would make you realize there were not bad teachers or failing Instead, we're heroes and safe havens for students in need of stability, encouragement, and love. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bet you had time to spare.
I could go on.
Thank you for being here and sharing with us.
Does anyone else have a public participation form? Thank you.
All right, it's our tradition here at the department to introduce and welcome new employees. And I think Susan Borman, you're going to start the introductions. Susan?
Hey, I'd like to introduce two new staff for Race to the Top. You introduce yourselves and tell the board briefly what you do.
My name is Kelly Young, and I'm the project manager for the Race to the Top Early Learning Challenge.
Hi, everybody. I am Maria Aberson, and I just started with the Department of Education and with the state, actually, in January. And I worked at the Office of Grand Start, Children in Care, and at the unlicensed provider enrollment room. And I'm a development technician there, so I just started. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Vanessa?
Good afternoon, everybody. We have a new employee in the Division of Accountability Services, Jim Gullen.
My name is Jim Gullen. I've been hired into the Office of Professional Preparation Services to assist our institutes of higher education with Title II reporting, as well as the development and administration of the EPI performance score. And before coming to the Michigan Department of Education, I have the good fortune of being an assessment consultant for Marty McCombe Elementary School District.
Welcome to the department. Ross, for Kyle.
I'd like to introduce Jessica Beagle from our State Aid and School Finance Office. Jessica, if you could just tell us a little bit about yourself?
I'm Jessica Beagle, as Ross said, with the State Aid and State Finance Office. There I assist with the state aid calculation, the pupil accounting, and the annual revisions and updates, and some internal accounting questions. I bring 15 years of combined experience from higher ed and K-12, 137 years from the finance office at Chelsea School District.
Thank you.
Well, welcome to all of our new staff members, and thank you for being here. And you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to, but you're welcome to. With that, our first speaker is not here, so do you want to stand at ease and wait for our first speaker?
Sure.
All right, we'll stand at ease.
They didn't expect us to be early.
I know, we're running too fast today. I apologize.
No, we apologize.
Don't apologize for being efficient.
I think Ray's our first one.
This is your honeymoon.
Yeah.
Do it, Ray, it's all right.
So call the meeting back to order at one o'clock here. The last item on the committee of the whole agenda is presentations on Michigan as a becoming a top 10 state over the next 10 years. The shared goal, the state superintendent and the state board of education is to develop Michigan into a top 10 education performing state, as we said, over the next 10 years. As a step towards that goal, we have asked organizations to share their three to five or whatever number of ideas on what we need to do to achieve this goal. The presentations begin today and will continue at our September board meeting and, as I said, we're seeking input from a lot of people outside of the meeting as well. As I, we are gathering information from MDE as well as input from the field. Everyone is a stakeholder with regard to Michigan education, so we want to hear from them. We expect to have an overall plan ready to go to the board for approval by the end of the school year, by the end of the calendar year. Some ground rules as we do these presentations, we want this to be a positive collaborative process. We ask that each organization will have about eight minutes to share their best ideas. We know you have much more than that probably to share and that's okay to share that to us in, in writing as well. We do have a timer set, so we'll be able to gauge the comments and keep us on track. In the interest of time, board members are asked to submit their written questions to Marty Ackley and will coordinate with organizations to answer any questions board members may have. It's really not to engage with people as they make their presentations, but to hear from organizations as they share their goals on helping us make Michigan a top 10 performing state as we move forward. John, do you have any additional comments before we call up our first speaker?
No, appreciate everybody coming and sharing their ideas.
All right. We're going to start with Kevin Hollenbeck, Vice President of WE Upjohn Institute. So Kevin, thank you for being here and for being ready to go early.
Thank you and thank the board for inviting me. I brought several copies of my PowerPoint. I'm not sure how you want to distribute those. Let's see, I assume I just hit enter here, right? Okay. All right. It's a bit daunting to try to present highlights from this study, this 13-month study that we did in eight minutes or less, but I will do my best and give you the highlights. So my remarks are based on this study. We entitled "The Road Toward K-12 Excellence in Michigan." We did mail a copy to all of the board members. It has a picture of a road on the front of it, looks like this. So hopefully you received those. There is, it's available on our website at this URL. So the intent of our study was, which started way back in 24, middle of 2014, to look at the effect of Proposal A on student achievement, especially the gap between economically disadvantaged and non-economically disadvantaged students. We felt after 20 years it was, the question was, is it time to tweak Proposal A, especially given known, what's known about its impact on enrollment. The study was funded by Kellogg, Skilman, and Steelcase Foundations. When we went into the study, we kind of had three priori assumptions. We thought Michigan had a legacy of strong education, but we felt it might have slipped a bit to the middle of the pack. We felt probably there were states that had funding systems that have narrowed the gap between economically disadvantaged and non-economically disadvantaged, and we felt probably Michigan had the wherewithal to invest significantly more into K-12. All of these assumptions are false. We quickly discovered that Michigan got surpassed by the U.S. average in student achievement. These are math scores for fourth and eighth grade on the NAEP between 1996 and 2013, and you'll see the red line, which is Michigan, U.S., over, surpassed the blue line, which is Michigan, in around 2003 or so. In our report, we have a very similar graphic for reading scores. We were surpassed in average funding as well, a little bit later, but nonetheless surpassed. This is the total of federal and state, I'm sorry, state and local funding per student. Data come from the Common Core data at the U.S. Department of Education. The economic significance of this, three numbers to keep in mind are 2%, $18,027 billion. If you convert the raw score differentials to lifetime earnings, well, we didn't, but Raj Chetty did this, it figures that lifetime earnings will lag by about 2% on average. On average, a discounted a person's lifetime earnings is about $900,000, of which 2% would be $18,000. When we multiply that by 1.5 million students, we're talking about lagging by $27 billion compared to the national average. Looking, here's some data on student achievement by economic disadvantage. All of our analysis, or most of our analysis kind of focused on 2003 and 2013, 2013 being the most recent data we could get at the time. The low income, you can see obviously lag behind non-low income by about 26 points in Michigan and in the nation. The good news, I guess, from these data are the gap in Michigan actually narrowed between 2003 and 2013, whereas it widened across the country. So kind of when you look, when you analyze this data, we find however, that low-income students are lagging across the country. The, the gap between Michigan and U.S. was about one point in 2003 and it became three points in 2013. The good news, as I mentioned, is that the gap between low income and non-low income got smaller in Michigan, but larger in the U.S. So is the glass half full? Well, maybe only one quarter full. The low-income students fell behind, but the non-low-income students fell even further behind. So the only good news really out of the data is that our gap slightly decreased, whereas the U.S. gap increased. Being an evaluator, I'm not supposed to use adjectives, but I think there's kind of an insidious feedback between poverty in the district and low-income student achievement. Districts that have a higher percentage of low-income students, their test scores are actually much lower than would be predicted when you look at, do kind of the state average, and if you have lower level of low income, they're higher. And so there's something going on in those districts or at those schools that dampen the scores even more than you would expect based on the students' characteristics. Now, one thing, of course, that you're probably all very much aware of is that you can use many different metrics to compare student achievement across states. What we used was a metric based on the average level for low-income and non-low-income students in 2013 and changes in those average scores between 2003 and 2013. So it's a metric that kind of combines both levels and growth or changes. Based on this metric, Michigan, I'm sorry, you obviously can't read this, but Michigan is 46th out of 51 states, counting, including the District of Columbia. The top seven states in this table were what we identified as the exemplary states, and a lot of our report is spent on looking at the funding mechanisms in those seven states, being New Jersey, Massachusetts, Maryland, Florida, Pennsylvania, New Hampshire, and Indiana. And so we have a chapter in the report that talks about how the schools are funded in those states. So the conclusion that we came to from our analysis of student achievement is that it has lagged considerably further than what we expected. And why is that? Well, one guess might be that the state funding effort lagged, but the answer is not really. We're 11th or 12th among the states in terms of support of education out of our tax base. So we do a pretty good job, given our tax base of supporting education. Second hypothesis would be expenditures are not directed to instruction. Well, when you look at the data, this, it's suggested, we rank very low, like 45th or 47th on percentage of expenditure that goes to instruction. I'm a little bit, I'm not really pushing this because it depends on how the different states reported their data and so forth, but there, there may be something to this expenditure. The one we really think is the strongest explanatory is the fact that our taxable resources have shrunk over this period of time. Our real economy per capita growth, I'm sorry, in 20, level in 2013 is 41st out of 50 states. Our growth was 49th out of 50 states in the last two decades.
That's all right, now let's keep going.
Okay. So basically, we believe that it's the, the economy, the economic difficulties that Michigan had during the, the last decade or more that had sort of been the culprit. In our analysis, we believe resources matter. We think money matters, and I know there's some debate on that, but all of our empirical work seems to suggest that. So we have six recommendations, which I think are all sort of short-run recommendations. If you're really serious about making strides in the long run, you probably need more drastic things than what we're suggesting here. We suggest a four-year competitive grant program coming out of state funds. Okay, we're 11th or 12th, but maybe there's more room in the budget to, to support education. So we suggest some, using the money on proven strategies to increase student achievement. We recommend a local district enhancement millage, and we've done a lot of simulations on how much this would cost and what the impact would be if the state equalized that at different levels. We recommend that the adequacy study that's about to be underway should include an econometric analysis of cost data as well as qualitative data on best practice. The five authors are all, I'm sorry, four of the five authors are all econometricians and quantitative types, and we think this is, definitely needs to be part of your adequacy Maybe my strongest recommendation is that we need to increase the funding level and increase a progressive funding structure for aid to address students. When you look at those seven exemplary states, six of those seven have a per low-income student supplemental support of at least $2,000. Florida's the only one that doesn't. Michigan's per student category girl 31A is about $600. It needs to be progressively funded because of that, what I call the insidious effect of poverty. The money is needed at higher levels, higher levels of money are needed at higher levels of poverty. Declining enrollment, this is also something that several reports are talking about, but a slowly declining enrollment district is losing the foundation grant, but its costs are not reducing by as much, and so there's sort of this downward spiral that many districts have found themselves on. We have one suggestion, Citizens Research Council has a different kind of suggestion on how to deal with this problem, but it is a big problem. And last suggestion is, many of those exemplary states have foundation grant systems, several of them use different foundation grants for different grade levels, and this is something that makes a lot of sense to us, and we suggest higher foundation grants in grades one to three and in high school. So that's my recommendations.
Thank you, Kevin. We appreciate you being here tonight and sharing your recommendations. See you again.
I look forward to your questions and would love to give you as much information as you would find useful.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ray Talmann, Executive Director of Middle Cities Education Association. Mr. Talmann?
You said 30 copies of the materials? Kidding. I'm either late or early.
We're ahead of schedule.
I'm early for September.
Yeah, we're ahead of schedule today. It's a good problem to have.
Yeah, it is.
Go ahead.
Okay. So. I'm trying to think how I can keep this side to eight minutes, everything I know inside of eight minutes. I'm seven minutes over the top already. I would be remiss, well, let me start with a good afternoon, President Austin.
Good afternoon.
Members of the board, good afternoon. Superintendent Wiston.
Governor's Advisor McPhee.
Everybody in the audience, the watching, the folks on television. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. And I might also add compliments and congratulations to you for this forum that you set up, these 30 presenters that you have. As far as I can tell, I'm not sure this state board has done something just like this, looking out, you know, how to make Michigan a top 10 school, a top 10 school in the country, top 10 state in the country. This is, I think, kind of a unique and special moment, and as one of the first presenters, I feel like the warm-up band at Woodstock or something, but be that as it may, let me do some data for you. Almost 25% of the children in Michigan live in poverty. That's over half a million children. The number of children in poverty have increased from the years 2006 to 2012 by 35%, which means about 1 in 4 children live in poverty. This is striking. 17% of Michigan's children live in concentrated poverty, and if you know what that means, that means they live in communities with 30% poverty or more. Here's the one that's even more striking. 12% of Michigan's children live in extreme poverty, which means half of the federal poverty rate. We'll talk about that in a second. So I'm talking about poverty. How come? I'm the Executive Director of the Middle Cities Education Association, and we service 30 urban schools across the state. It's a natural thing for me to do that, but to talk about poverty and not recognize it's beyond urban, it is rural, it's every place else. And I want you to know, when I came to you today, I thought about, well, I've done work before, I've been the Executive Director of the Michigan Association of School Administrators, and the Executive Director of the Michigan Association of Intermediate School Administrators, and I stood back and I said, if this state is to become a top 10 state, what are the one or two things that are really important? One of them is poverty. The second thing is coherence, and I think it's easy to say, I don't think I'm risking anything when I say, we have a K through 12 system that's not particularly coherent, and I could use a couple of examples like teacher evaluation or testing, but suffice to say, compliments to you. You're bringing in 30 presenters, you're going to hear this coherence or lack of coherence, and as you develop the direction that we're going, hopefully you'll address it. For me, I'm going to focus on poverty. Here's the poverty guidelines. I'm sure you've all seen them before. Remember the one statistic I gave you right at the end there when I first started off? 1 in 8 students live at a poverty level that's 50% of this level. So I've given you some statistics about poverty. You know these things. I see Gilda Jacobs back there, I'm sure she's going to talk about it too, and the previous presenter did as well. Went on, I shared in the couple of minutes that I have some perspectives, two sets of perspectives. One from a student point of view and the other one from a policy point of view. Student first. Here's seven points about the impact of poverty on children. I'm not going to go through all of these because time doesn't permit, but I could give you seven pages of seven points relative to the impact of poverty on children in schools. But just look at that third one, 43,000 Michigan public school students were homeless. Next one, 1 in 5 are food insecure. They don't have enough food to have an active, healthy lifestyle. Look at the one at the bottom. If you were a child born in poverty, by the time you were age four, in your third year, you would have heard 30 million fewer words. Again, there are pages I could give you. What's the point? The, the point is poverty has a profound impact on student learning and, and teaching. Here's some policy perspectives. You know this. Among the 50 largest U.S. city districts, cities, Detroit has the highest poverty level at 59%. Here's what you may not know. Michigan's five highest community poverty rates, these are, these are communities of 65,000 or more. Well, we start with Detroit, and then after that is, well, it's not after that, it's before that. Flint has 66% poverty rate. And Lansing, our capital city school district, 45. You're born in the home of our current state superintendent. Kalamazoo, 40% poverty rate, home of the Kalamazoo Promise. So if you take these 30 school districts that make up middle cities and you average their free and reduced, it's almost 70% free and reduced lunch. If you add up the students in middle cities in those 30 school districts, we're three and a half times as big as Detroit. So the earlier point about the profound impact of poverty on student and learning and teaching is also a statewide issue. and teaching is also a statewide issue. See this chart? Have you seen it before? I got this off the MDE website. That horizontal line, so all these dots are buildings, that horizontal line goes from 0 to 100, and it measures poverty in school districts. The rest of the dots are the buildings in the state, and the red dots are the ones I want to focus on. They are at the bottom because they are your priority schools. There's almost a perfect correlation between poverty and priority schools, right? So, when you see this chart, what are we really measuring? Performance or poverty? Likely, we're measuring both. So, I'm about to show you a video, and it's a 75-second video. Marilyn, when I press this button, will it start right up with the volume and everything?
It used to.
With our fingers crossed. That's important, because right out of the box, this presenter, in the 75-second video, is going to get right to the point. And oh, by the way, this is someone that shared video with you on many occasions before. You guys ready? Let's do it.
... we claim ashamed of, and I think other people should be ashamed of, and that is, we just don't do well with poor kids. We're all in urban poor kids. We've done a, the system does not support them very well at all.
Why is that?
I think part of it is there's people pointing at each other. I mean, some of this is things that have nothing to do with education itself, but as state superintendent, honestly, Rick, I was reluctant. Five years ago, I started talking about poverty and its impact on these kids, and just a rash of social media and other folks saying, well, he's making excuses for teachers and the rest. So, I kind of backed off. At the Governor's Summit this year, Governor's Education and Economics Summit, I've done it 10 years now, he does one keynote and I do the other keynote, and I thought, I'm going to get this back on the table, and I couldn't believe how many CEOs came up to me afterwards and said, I hadn't really thought about that. That makes sense. I'm thinking, these kids, some are hungry, you know, we're wondering why third-grade reading, which by the way is improved. If you look at our test scores, they're up to 70% of the kids are proficient, but in this particular case, I thought, they don't even understand in some cases that if a kid's hungry, they're not worried about learning to read.
Mike Flanagan, who provided this information on June 26th. So, what to do, what to do? Here's one quote, "How do unequal opportunities help close the achievement gap?" Well, they don't. Instead, they perpetuate the gap.
Continue, please.
I'll be done in just a second. "Closing the opportunity gap will require that school resources, talent, and spending be targeted to kids who need the most." Who said this? Arnie Duncan, US Secretary. So, you asked me for three to five recommendations, I'll give you three. And I know in giving you these first two recommendations, you're not the legislature, you don't get to appropriate money, but your thoughtful and timely consideration of these first two recommendations are invaluable. Number one, fully fund at-risk. At-risk hasn't increased in 13 years, it's been about the same. The number of children in at-risk have, such that we prorated at-risk about $320 last year. We had $70 million more in at-risk this year. Thank you, Governor and Legislature. We're still going to prorate students $25 per pupil. Next one, close the opportunity gap. We have to have a metric to fully fund the foundation, have increases. We probably need a metric, we also need a metric, to close the equity funding gap. We have that, that's 2X. We also need a metric after you fully fund at-risk to close the opportunity gap. So, here is one thing that you can do. Continually consider that poverty matters. Poverty always matters. Poverty is a problem that's not going to be resolved when we fully fund at-risk or we have a metric to close the opportunity gap. It's a condition, it's a reality, and as I already said, it profoundly affects teaching and learning across the state. So, in an attempt to keep the focus of this board as you consider these 30, what the 30 presenters say, I have something for you all. I'll push five down this way.
Thank you.
Okay. And six down this way, I think that covers the board. They're going to be collector's items for sure. And it is a cup with a message, and the message is what I'm saying. Poverty matters. And so, if you keep these as you go through these, and you look at these cups, and ask this question, each and every issue that comes before us, each and every proposal that comes before us, how does poverty affect it? Because poverty always matters. And by the way, this is a left-hand cup or a right-hand cup? It always has the same message. Poverty matters. Lastly, and I know I'm over the top, Superintendent Winston, a quote. "Unfortunately, many Americans live on the outskirts of hope, some because of their poverty, some because of their color, and too many because of both. Our task is to help replace despair with opportunity." Who said that? LBJ. And so, I thank you for the opportunity to present today. I congratulate you on the work that you're doing here, making Michigan a top-10 state, and I ask you to remember, poverty always matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Talmann.
Thank you. Thanks for the moment.
Next up, we have Wendy from the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals. All right. Thank you, Wendy. You're all set technology-wise, you're set to go.
Good to go. Good afternoon, and thank you Superintendent Winston, President Austin, and members of the state board for allowing us this opportunity to present today and to talk to you about MASSP's roadmap to making Michigan a top-10 education state in the next 10 years. My name's Wendy Zadebropur, I'm the Executive Director of the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals, and we're representing 1,700 principals statewide. I also dragged Bob Capchin up here as my technology assistant. MASSP believes that making Michigan a top-10 education state requires a systemic approach that will align curriculum, assessment, and accountability with a particular focus on instruction. Let me be clear about what I mean by a systemic approach. I mean that we need to establish a clear vision for the direction that we want to head as a state, align our curriculum to the end goal, and align the rest of the system to the curriculum, and stop the constant shifts that have put our education system in a state of flux. In many ways, Michigan's already started down this path, but we have gaps and inconsistency. We became a national leader in 2006 with the adoption of the Michigan Merit Curriculum. Since then, we've continued down this path by adopting the Common Core State Standards, and the board is already working on taking us to the next step by moving toward new, rigorous science, and social studies standards. But we must maintain this focus and stop the constant battles over standards and curriculum that create havoc in our local schools. We're making huge strides toward aligning our summative assessment system to our rigorous standards, and we still have some room to improve. The transition to the SAT in 11th grade and the adoption of the PSAT at 9th and 10th grade closes a big gap in our summative assessments. And if we can finally finish the work started by the Michigan Council on Educator Effectiveness and adopt a meaningful, rich, improvement-focused educator evaluation system, we will take a huge step down the path toward having an accountability system that will actually improve student achievement. But while the state is focused on setting standards and building summative measures of success, we've left a gap in our system. In short, we have left it up to the local districts to navigate their own route without giving them the resources they need. And while some districts have been able to fill this void on their own, when we look systemically, we see achievement gaps, mixed results, and a lack of consistency. We can no longer afford to leave this process up to chance. To take the next step, Michigan needs to focus on instruction and provide local educators with the resources they need to navigate the maze. Why instruction particularly? Simply put, research consistently shows that effective instructional practice is the key to moving the needle on student achievement. In your packet, I've included a brief summary of research from Hattie Marzano and other leaders in the field that illustrates a single point. If you improve the quality of instructional practice, you will improve student performance more than you could by moving any other lever. This does not mean standardizing education, on the contrary, every school's path, every teacher's path, and indeed, every student's path will be different. Instead, think of focusing on instruction as giving every educator a GPS. Educators need to be able to recalibrate their route when they run into unexpected problems. They need a common vision for what good instruction looks like so that they can constantly check themselves and each other against the standard. They need the tools to measure their student's progress throughout the year and track progress over time so they can adjust their course. And they need support from the state, from their associations and unions, and from their colleagues so that they can achieve common vision and learn to use the tools that they're being given. And fortunately for us, much of the work to put this concerted focus on instruction has already been done. The Michigan Council on Educator Effectiveness recommended a series of educator evaluation frameworks for schools that in large part share a common research base and identify a common vision for what good instruction looks like. MDE should adopt this as our state's definition of high-quality instruction so that our schools have a common instructional focus. This will give schools much more useful guidance than simply looking at summative student achievement or growth. Along these same lines, schools need an assessment system that focuses less on high-stakes summative assessments and much more heavily on diagnostic, formative, and interim assessments. These types of assessments, when combined with academic data warehouse, that can incorporate local data and includes pre-built reports and useful analytics, will empower every principal, teacher, student, and parent to access and analyze their own students' data. And finally, we need to support our principals and teachers with instructional modeling, coaching, feedback, and training so they can improve their instruction and learn to use the tools being provided. And this support cannot be a haphazard system of professional development that we have been using to date. We need professional development, but that PD must be aligned to the needs of each teacher and school. It needs to be delivered not just in a lecture format or in a one-day session, but with support and interventions in the classroom that are ongoing, and it must be based on what research tells us are the best instructional practices. This last element is the most difficult, but also the most important, because without the human capital to build better educators, the tools will go unused and our vision unfulfilled. But MASSP believes that we can achieve this goal through a systemic approach that aligns our efforts to a common vision and focuses on instruction. And piece by piece, path by path, our schools will build a roadmap to making Michigan a top-10 education state. Thank you so much for your time and for your attention, and I know you can't ask questions or give feedback today, but I'd be more than happy to talk to you about this further in the future, and I thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Wendy. We have to admit what you said, you did it within our time limit, wasn't that a rule?
Don't you have extra credit or stars or something?
That's right. Thank you very much, Wendy. Next up, we have representatives from the Michigan Elementary and Middle School Principals Association. We have Paul and their president, both I think are here.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Give them one second, pass out the papers, and we'll...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Paul, for being here. If you want to introduce yourself and your president.
Great, thank you. President Austin and distinguished board members, thank you for allowing us a few minutes to share our perspective on how to raise our state's education system back to the top. I'm Paul Libanow, Executive Director of the Michigan Elementary and Middle School Principals Association, and with me, our association board president, Dr. Shannon Spickard from Mylan Middle School, and she's going to begin our presentation.
So, I brought with me a couple of bottles here, but I want these to represent all the Saras and all the Temathys, the students that we are actually here to represent.
Oh, you're fine.
Okay. So, Timothy is a young boy, just like many young boys that I have had come through my middle school, and let me tell you a little bit about Timothy, because I think that's the important part about why we're here. So, Timothy belongs to a family of domestic violence.
Oh, boy.
Timothy's dad and mom had gotten into a fight one night. Timothy is not getting his dinner, and his dad leaves, and his mom turns to substance abuse. Timothy oversleeps and doesn't make it to school on time. Timothy's neighbor finally takes him, but he's missed the bus driver who greets him politely, who gives him a smile at the beginning of the day. He's missed his first-hour homeroom teacher, who actually he has a code for, which means, "I've had a rough day, Mrs. Jones, can you please let other teachers know." So, Timothy's going to second hour, and he knows that he's going to be asked for the big assignment that was due that day. Do any of you want to open up Timothy?
No, we started moving this way.
So, we have teachers and staff and principals who open up students like Sarah and Timothy every day, and they need to do so with appropriate skills and supports that are in place. So, our first focus that we want you to look at is the whole child, because that is the foundation of making sure that education happens, and we cannot get to a top-performing school without taking care of our children at a very intimate foundational level. So, we have that there because regardless of our students' socioeconomic background, they do deserve to make sure that their needs are taken care of, and we can't look at them as just buckets where we can force information in, because that information is not going to matter if we don't take care of the very basic needs, as Maslow has told us in his hierarchy of needs statement. So, again, it's really important for us to make sure that we don't ignore this area and that we cultivate it, and then that will help us get to having a coherent curriculum and instructional practices.
Secondly, we must develop greater coherence as relates to instructional practice in classrooms and learning standards for our students, focus and coherence. Standards bring coherence and strengthen both students and teachers. They make intentions, practices, and goals transparent and bring credibility to the profession. One of my children, Air Force Captain Brandon Libanow, is a fighter pilot. Training for all pilots is uniform, especially in the initial stages. It becomes more specific as pilots are assigned to the specific aircraft, but all pilots must meet the same level of standards proficiency in order to fly multimillion-dollar aircraft. There's a high level of coherence in instructional practices leading to high levels of achievement on standards in the Air Force. Uniformity in Michigan curriculum standards, training programs for teachers and principals in our schools is imperative. The state of Tennessee is experiencing incredible growth in student achievement, in part due to the coherent training model being used with teachers and principals. School principals are trained by highly motivated learning facilitators in Tennessee with their department's support on reading and mathematics learning standards and the most effective instructional strategies. Tennessee Department of Education leaders suggests this is, that this uniform, target-focused training along with a learning community's mindset for everyone has been key to their success. The CCSSL and our Department of Education with the leadership of Greg Dionne is supporting our efforts to develop a similar model for Michigan principals. Point three, universal preschool, transition to third-grade reading. Third-grade reading proficiency is one reason, one important reason why preschool is so important. Third-grade reading success is the talk of this town in nearly every conversation among teachers and elementary, middle school principals across the state today. But first, let me thank you and congratulate you for the amazing success for the growth and quality of programs serving Michigan's preschool children. I've traveled from coast to coast over the course of the last three years, and I've heard again and again... Invite you to email me with questions, or simply get together with me for a cup of coffee. I'll even buy you lunch to get more detailed information about our perspective. We're thankful for your volunteerism and the work that you do representing Michigan's kids. I know at times it's a tireless, thankless job, but we are most grateful. Thank you.
Thank you both for being here and sharing your thoughts with us.
Don't forget to take your coat.
Yeah, we don't want somebody to accidentally open that. Next up, we have Gilda Jacobs, President and CEO of Michigan League for Public Policy.
So I just want to be sure I know how you're going to answer this.
Thank you.
Yes. So I want to thank everybody for this opportunity to address you. In particular, I really want to thank my good friend, Ray Tellman, for really very nicely setting the table for a lot of my remarks. I think you're going to see that there's a theme that we have here, because the issue of poverty is pervasive in our state, and it really does help drive the education decisions that we're here to really talk about. So the League really believes that we need to take a look at a two-generation approach to solving poverty and education. You know, we've heard that the number of children that are eligible for freer or reduced-priced lunches in school continues to be the most reliable predictor of outcomes on standardized tests, and unfortunately, despite a lot of efforts, little has really changed. There's a very strong relationship between school success and family income, and, you know, therefore, we really need to be very smart in terms of how we target resources, which I'll be speaking to in a little while. We feel it's time to really invest in this two-generation approach and to acknowledge the perils that poverty has, and that it's important that parents also get education and training so that they can support their kids moving forward. What's happened, unfortunately, the last several years is we've kind of moved backwards in this state a little bit. There's been some policy decisions that actually are increasing poverty, like the reduction in the earned income tax credit, punitive cash assistance truancy policies, and asset tests on food assistance. So the League has three top recommendations. You know, as we've heard now several speakers talk about, it's really important to target our resources. Our major recommendation in this area is to expand funding for the at-risk programs. Obviously, there is a common theme that you're going to continue to hear. And these at-risk programs will target communities of color and school districts with high poverty rates. Investing in early childcare and education. We really appreciate the fact that Michigan has made huge strides so far, but we still need to be moving even more forward and more positively. There is irrefutable scientific evidence that learning begins at birth, and the greatest period for brain development starts actually prenatally and obviously in the very earliest years of life. We need a true preschool-through-12th-grade system. We need to be addressing prenatal care and services for infants and toddlers. And right now, again, we're making strides, but if you really look at the services for the zero-to-three-year-olds, we're still pretty woefully inadequate. And then finally, the need to strengthen adult education and training. Michigan has cut adult ed by 90% since 1996. So we've heard a little bit about the impact that poverty has on education. We know that kids that live in poverty are more likely to repeat grades, they're more disengaged in school. One of four adults who spend more than three years in poverty fail to receive a diploma. It's interesting, 25% of adult women who spent half of their childhood in poverty, so that's like nine years or more, were consistently employed as compared to 60% of adult women who had not lived in poverty. So, you know, the implication is huge. Okay, so we talked a little bit about targeting resources. You know, we know that at-risk funds are allocated for a range of services based on the number of children that are qualifying for free school meals. This year's budget focuses those dollars on improving third-grade reading, as we've heard, and graduating students who are career and college-ready. The at-risk program is an extremely good vehicle for, you know, targeting these resources and recognizing that there are costs involved in bringing children in who start, you know, behind their peers right from the get-go. The governor recommended an increase of $100 million for at-risk in 2016 from the current levels at $309 million. This is the first increase in more than a decade. This is fabulous. And while we're pleased that the legislature approved a $70 million increase, we believe that more is needed. Recommendation number two, improve early childhood education and care services with a focus on youngest kids. This is, I want to talk a little bit about childcare, because it is really the perfect example of a two-generation strategy to improve school readiness and ultimately achievement. Michigan has other early childhood programs in place, but has not really committed yet sufficient state funding to ensure broad access. It included our home visiting programs, which there's so much research out on how effective these programs are. And then Early On. Early On, as you know, is a program that helps to identify infants and toddlers that have developmental delays so that they can be helped right in those critical first years. Michigan has not appropriated any state funds for the program, and the federal funds don't pay for services after the kids are identified. So we know that high-quality childcare helps parents that work, and children have to be a high priority. I think that this number is really important. You know, 2/3 of all young children live in families where both parents work, and that is really a very significant statistic to keep in mind. Childcare costs are a huge barrier. When we look at the amount of childcare and what it costs for parents, I mean, I honestly just have to kind of shake my head. I don't know, you know, what we can do to help change this, but the average annual cost of two children in a childcare center is over $18,000. So for a parent that is in a low-wage job, or even two parents at minimum wage, this is really unaffordable, and yet, this is so important so that these kids really have a rich experience to help them be more successful later on. There are two safety net programs that have the lowest eligibility rate, so includes childcare, and the other one is cash assistance. There are some restrictions to federal funding, but right now, Michigan, for example, doesn't use its federal TANF money for childcare as many other states do. So I think that it would be important to take another look there. Where to start grossly underfunded childcare system? You know, one thing is we want to be sure that all safety regulations are in place and that there are enough inspectors going in to make sure that kids are in safe places. You can read this, I don't need to really go through that slide. Just want to very briefly touch on how important adult education is. Almost a quarter of a million Michigan adults between the ages of 25 and 44 don't have a high school diploma or a GED. And just a small percentage, just 7%, are actually enrolled in these adult ed programs. So this is an area that we really need to kind of beef up. We need to get these folks that are in adult ed, that can benefit from adult ed in there so that they can start earning the wages that they need to support their family. It's a means, it's not an end. And this is just a quick chart to show how funding for adult ed has been cut so deeply over the last, oh, gosh, 20 years. So in a nutshell, that's my program. I think if we can do something to help move the needle on poverty, I think we're going to have much greater outcomes for kids in the state and be able to move us forward to a top-10 state. Thank you.
Thank you, Gilda. Thank you for being here. Our next speaker is Gary, but do I see him? Oh, he's sitting over in the corner. She'll put it up there for you. So Gary is from the Great Lakes Education Project. We thank Gary for being here.
Thank you, Superintendent. Welcome to the job.
Thank you.
See, we're ahead of schedule, so that's bodes well for your administration. The Great Lakes Education Project is a nonprofit, semi-bipartisan advocacy group that supports quality, choice, and accountability in public education.
Thank you. No, you didn't do anything wrong.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. We would acknowledge that Michigan is a top-10 state already in education in terms of overall investment in K-12 education and in terms of our teacher salaries. We are a top-10 state. What we're sorely lacking in is results when you consider and understand that 50% or less than 50% of our K8 students are proficient in math and reading, and less than 20% of our high school graduates are considered college and career-ready. So you asked for three to five key recommendations, so we'll split the difference with you and make four. Vision, choice, quality, and accountability. So we'll start with vision. A considerable, and my clock's not running there, so I don't want to get extra time.
She'll get it going right now.
A considerable block to becoming a top-10 state in educational performance is really what we see as a lack of consensus and a common vision in the state as to what we actually expect from K-12 education. We have far too many leaders advocating a variety of conflicting goals and priorities when you consider that we have various members of the state Board of Ed, the superintendent, that's you, the governor, the legislature, 800 school districts, a ton of ISDs, teachers' unions, and all of the alphabet soup of stakeholder groups that are appearing before you today on September 8. One of the things we think could help streamline and help us create a common vision for education in Michigan would be for the governor to appoint the state superintendent. Probably not the most popular position to espouse at this table, but outside of this meeting room, we think it makes great sense for the children and parents of Michigan. Our second issue would be choice. We think that choice should be expanded and not restricted. Because a zip code should never determine the educational outcomes for children, we believe that we must expand parental choice as a higher priority, and we support any time, any place, any way, and any pace approach to education. Full choice would include not only intra-district choice, but inter-district choice, expanded charter public schools, expanded virtual schools, homeschooling, education savings accounts, scholarship tax credits, and school vouchers. 22 states in this country, including every other Great Lakes state except Michigan, has some form of publicly-funded private choice. All of those states in the Midwest outperform Michigan academically. Our third point would be to improve quality. Michigan must maintain high standards and rigorous expectations for all students with a focus on early literacy and college and career readiness. We're proud to be among the lead organizations supporting the effort to improve third-grade reading proficiency. But we believe that improved academic performance should be the single, number-one, and only priority for the state's K-12 education system. We believe that quality schools should be expanded and given more flexibility and freedom from bureaucracy from Lansing, and we believe that chronically poor-performing schools or failing schools should either improve or be closed much more rapidly than they have been in the past. We believe that accountability and transparency measures should be applied uniformly to all public schools and not merely used as a political sledgehammer against a small number of schools based on governance alone. We believe improving teacher quality is critical. We believe to do that, we need an evaluation system that recognizes student academic growth. We must put the best and brightest teachers in front of our students, regardless of whether they were educated in a traditional undergraduate college of education, or they may be alternatively certified. We believe we must reward our highest-performing teachers and treat them as professionals, but we must also require ineffective teachers to improve or leave the profession. Now, the issue of addressing our teacher prep programs in the state is an issue bigger than eight minutes will allow us to discuss, but we think it's a priority that should be tackled by this department and this legislature. Our fourth point was to increase accountability. We believe the state and the department should remove the color-coded rainbow report card and adopt a parent-friendly school accountability program, an assistant that will provide A-to-F letter grades to individual schools based on student proficiency and student growth. We believe we must pass reforms necessary to ensure the future sustainability of MIPSers, and to the degree possible, we should honor the retirement commitments to existing education professionals. We also believe under accountability, there's been a great deal of talk about tweaking Proposal A or scrapping Proposal A. On the contrary, we believe that delivering on the promise of Proposal A requires an equitable and a uniform foundation grant for all students to cover basic operational costs, leaving at least $5 billion of federal, state, and local money to be used for additional targeted funding for special-needs students. And further, of course, I'm sure you understand, we believe this uniform foundation grant should follow students to the school of their choice wherever they are in Michigan. So those are the four key recommendations we would make. We didn't bring any props, we didn't bring any lunch. We'd be happy to prop you or lunch you if you'd be willing to be seen in a Lansing restaurant with us. We'd be happy to do that. And my email address is at the bottom of this one-pager. Be happy to answer any questions in a more lengthy way and be more candid and tell you how we really feel, perhaps, in an email. But we look forward to this conversation and this process. We hope it does lead to a consensus vision for K-12 education in the state.
Thank you, Gary, for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Appreciate your time. The next two presenters wanted to present together, and that's Dan Hurley from the CEO of the President's Council of State Universities of Michigan, and Tom Sawton, Vice President, Tim, not Tom, Tim, Vice President of Government Affairs and Public Policy for Business Leaders for Michigan. Dan and Tim, thank you for being here.
Good afternoon. Good to see you, Superintendent Liston and President Austin. The rest of you I have not seen before. My name's Dan Hurley. I'm a 40-year native of Michigan, but who has spent the last eight years in Washington, DC...
and a uniform foundation grant for all students to cover basic operational costs, leaving at least $5 billion of federal, state, and local money to be used for additional targeted funding for special needs students. And further, of course, I'm sure you understand, we believe this uniform foundation grant should follow students to the school of their choice wherever they are in Michigan. So those are the four key recommendations we would make. We would, we didn't bring any props, we didn't bring any lunch. We'd be happy to prop you or lunch you if you'd be willing to be seen in a Lansing restaurant with us. We'd be happy to do that. And my email address is at the bottom of this one pager. Be happy to answer any questions in a more lengthy way and be more candid and tell you how we really feel perhaps in an email. But we look forward to this conversation and this process. We hope it does lead to a consensus vision for K-12 education in the state.
Thank you Gary for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Appreciate your time. The next two presenters wanted to present together, and that's Dan Hurley from the CEO of the President's Council of State Universities of Michigan and Tom Sawton, Vice President, Tim, not Tom, Tim, Vice President of Government Affairs and Public Policy for Business Leaders for Michigan. Dan and Tim, thank you for being here.
Good afternoon. Good to see you Superintendent Wiston and President Austin. The rest of you I have not seen before. My name's Dan Hurley. I'm a 40-year native of Michigan, but who has spent the last eight years in Washington, DC representing the interest of state universities across the country and came back to Lansing just a few weeks ago. So a total expert on Michigan K-12 policy, sure to dispense with some wisdom. I am joined here by Tim Sawton, Vice President of Government Relations and Public Policy for Business Leaders for Michigan. I can say affirmatively that there is no state in this nation that has a stronger statewide business-led advocacy group in support of public high red than Michigan. And we're very pleased with that. Our state universities recognize that and recognize the value of having key stakeholders externally affirm the value of our collective work. As such, Tim and I are here to commend the State Board of Education and newly installed State Superintendent Wiston for holding these forums to gather input from a wide array of constituent groups on how to make Michigan a top education state. The state's institutions of higher education and its employers recognize that as the recipients, so to speak, of the state's pre-K through 12 educational product, if you will, the graduates of our K-12 schools, the state's future economic prosperity and civic and social vitality are dependent on the quality of Michigan's entire educational continuum. The most important foundation which is built on our pre-kindergarten through elementary and secondary education system. I share with you today not a prescription of specific policy or programmatic steps to consider in making Michigan a top education state, but rather to affirm what I believe are two overarching principles the State Board of Education and Superintendent Wiston should consider as you embark on a rejuvenated effort to drive Michigan's educational system to a higher level of achievement. The first principle is that simply of high expectations for all of Michigan's students, which begins and ends with high curricular standards. High expectations, high standards. I recognize that considerable work has gone into developing and refining the Michigan merit curriculum and integrating in students' educational experience the even more rigorous Michigan academic standards. This progress is certainly commendable. Looking forward, the State Board, the Michigan Department of Education, Superintendent Wiston, and other critical stakeholders will certainly be faced with additional decisions impacting K-12 curricular standards. When making these decisions, I encourage you to always choose the path of greater academic rigor. We all know the state's future prosperity will largely be dependent on the talent levels of its citizens and as such on boosting the state's post-secondary educational levels. And in turn, we know that the greatest predictor of our children's propensity to enter and succeed in college lies whether he or she completed a rigorous core curriculum in high school. A second principle I encourage the board to consider involves the measurement of student learning outcomes. As has been the case with curricular standards, the assessment tools and systems utilized in Michigan's K-12 schools have been and continue to be refined. This enhancement is welcomed and will hopefully provide a more accurate portrayal of the knowledge, skills, and abilities our students are engendering through their educational experiences. And while continuous improvement in all aspects of instructional delivery and assessment is important, we believe it will be helpful to craft a long-term, consistent, and sustainable model of K-12 curricular assessment. Among the benefits this will provide is much needed stability, validity, and confidence needed for the state's post-secondary education providers to ascertain the academic readiness needs and the most efficient educational path appropriate for students once they enter our institutions. I would like to underscore here as the first set of outcomes from the new Michigan Student Test of Educational Progress, M-Step, are released this fall, the state universities will serve as an affirming voice of support in the face of what might be some consternation as it involves assessing the results of the more rigorous academic curriculum that is now in place. In conclusion, our state universities, in tandem with the state's business community and business leaders for Michigan, stand ready to work with you further to strengthen our state's pre-K through 12 educational system, whether this involves making progressive refinements to currently existing frameworks or wholesale innovative changes through new paradigms in the teaching, learning, and assessment functions of Michigan's educational enterprise. Thank you. And with that, I'll pivot to Tim here.
Thanks, Dan. And thank you Superintendent Wiston and President Austin, members of the Board for this opportunity. I'm going to reinforce what, much of what Dan said and talk to you a little bit about our organization. If you're not familiar with us, Business Leaders for Michigan is the state's Business Roundtable. Our members are the chairpersons or most senior level executives of the state's largest job providers and universities. So together, our members power over one quarter of the state's economy and we educate nearly one half of the public university students in the state. Our work is centered around our Michigan Turnaround Plan, which we introduced in 2009. And within that plan, our strategies to, strategies that we advocate for, we raise awareness about, and initiatives that we champion to make Michigan a top 10 state for three things: jobs, personal income, and a healthy economy. So we're very familiar with this goal of wanting to be top 10. And without question, each of those goals that we have, jobs, income, healthy economy, are impacted by how well the state, how well we are preparing our young people for post-secondary education and careers. Today, there are tens of thousands of jobs in Michigan going unfilled because employers can't find candidates with the right skills to fill them. We know that states with higher levels of education attainment have higher per capita personal incomes. When you look at Michigan, it's not surprising that we rank 35th in terms of our personal income, reflecting our rank as 31st nationally for the percentage of working age adults with an associate's degree or higher. And studies show that erasing gaps in student achievement can have a positive impact on our gross domestic product. So with those basic facts as a foundation, a major focus of our work over the last several years has been in three key areas. One, increasing access to early childhood education. We all know the studies that show that the return on investment from early childhood education in terms of improved student performance throughout academic careers and later life are strong arguments in favor of early childhood education, and we support the additional investments that the governor and legislature have made over the last two years to increase access. Second, increasing support for post-secondary education, our institutions, and for worker training. A study that was done by the House Fiscal Agency back in 2013, as well as others, have shown a clear relationship between cuts in state support for higher education and increases in tuition. If we want to increase access and affordability, and most importantly, the number of students completing post-secondary studies, we have to address that disparity. Now, the good news is, is that in the last four years, four years in a row now, the governor and the legislature have invested more in our higher education institutions. We still have ground to make up, but we are once again headed in the right direction. And then lastly, we've been part of a coalition, many of the folks behind me who have supported maintaining Michigan's more rigorous academic K through 12 standards for our students with aligned assessments. 2009 study by McKinsey and Company concluded that for the US, if the US could close the achievement gap in math, reading, and science between US 9, 10, and 15-year-olds and their international counterparts, it would increase US GDP between 1.3 and 2.3 trillion, that's trillion with a T, if we could close that gap. So we know that we have gaps in Michigan, and if we can close those gaps, it'll have a similarly positive impact on the state's economy. We support the adoption of the more rigorous Michigan standards and the aligned assessments, and we applaud you for the work you're doing in that area. And that is what I want to leave you with, with my comments. I want to reinforce how important that work is and that Business Leaders for Michigan is prepared to support you as you move ahead. We know the standards and assessments have received a great deal of attention over the last several years. We know that they will continue to receive attention because as we move forward, we've seen this in other states, scores will drop. And we need you to be proactive in sending that message to parents, students, and teachers that it's okay, the sky is not falling. We've seen it in other states, scores drop, they come back up. So we stand here today, ready to commit to you, that we will help reinforce that message when it's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both, Tim and Dan, for being here and sharing your thoughts with us. We deeply appreciate your time.
They get extra credit, too.
Yeah, they both get extra credit for leaving time as well. Forgot my gold stars. All right, Steve Norton, Executive Director of Michigan Parents for Schools, is next. And I see Steve walking in.
I have the materials. I'll just give it a second here for the handouts to be passed out, and then we'll get started. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Hello, Steve. And the floor is yours.
Thank you for having me here, Superintendent, President Austin, and members of the State Board. I appreciate the opportunity to share a few ideas with you, and I'm also amazed at how far ahead of time you are. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to hear most of the previous presenters, which I had hoped to do, so I can't.
Did you be able to do it online or through?
Yes, there's usually recording, but I was hoping to have something intelligent to say in reaction to their remarks. But in any case, and I thought of my colleague Elizabeth Welch, who is on my board and is also a parent activist and a member of the East Grand Rapids Public School Board of Education, could join us, but she may not be able to be here.
We apologize for being out of schedule and goofing that plan up.
That's quite all right. Well, I'll try and be extremely brief now that I'm down to seven minutes. So I can't compare myself to our five ideas to what's come before. But I think that if you glance down the front sheet in front of you, which is what we're talking about, I think you'll see that what the ideas that we wanted to bring to the table were rather big picture. And I think that that's still very important because often, some of the big picture ideas don't really get addressed as we get down into the minutia of policy. And I think that sometimes, not only do they not get addressed, but they get answered without being answered explicitly, if you see what I mean. So the top idea, in reaction to the charge of talking about how Michigan can become a top 10 education state, is to reconsider our definition of achievement. As things go, we risk worshiping test scores above all other concepts or measures of student learning. We're at risk of mistaking the diagnostic tool for the goal. And I think that that's something that we really need to step back and look at. And that, of course, is something that is nationwide, but it also particularly applies to the policies that we are setting here at the state level. Includes a bias towards viewing education as the acquisition of facts and methods rather than clarity of thought, reason, inquiry, and thoughtful choices. Parents aren't interested in raising good test takers. We want our children to grow into productive members of our community and thoughtful friends, neighbors, and citizens. We're focused on our children's future, not yesterday's test scores. Second, I think we, as a state, need to get clear on what we mean by a quality education. Schools do so much more than impart information, as I just mentioned. As far as most parents are concerned, it's those other aspects of learning which are the most important in the long term. We don't have a time for an exercise in feel-good rhetoric on this point, but we do need a thorough and honest public discussion, informed by professional educators, about what we want for our state's children. And I refer you to the last sheet in your packet, which is a statement on quality education by Parents Across America, which is a national parents advocacy group of which we are a state affiliate and on whose national board I am honored to serve. And I participated in drafting that statement. Third, we need to, and I imagine you've heard this already, we need to ensure that our schools and the professionals in them have the resources they need to offer every child a quality education and to encourage real student learning. I will point out, and there are some details on this in the middle section, which is the presentation that we made last year in answer to your request for thoughts about how to restructure Michigan public schools. Michigan's ranking in state K-12 spending per pupil has consistently fallen over the last 20 years, matched by a corresponding slide in NAEP scores compared to other states. Again, I don't want to lionize test scores, but I think that that at least is a diagnostic. Secondly, overall commitment of state and local funding to K-12 as a share of Michigan's economy has been in decline, in good times and bad, for a decade or more, and it's mostly a function of tax policy. This effort to provide adequate resources starts with money, but it goes on to smart spending and intelligent policies and systems to bring our hopes to fruition. And I would like to point you in particular to the adequacy study, which is now in law, I cite the P.A. Public Act number. And also, I would suggest the educational audit bill, which came out of a proposal that we originally made and was introduced as legislation in the last session, but unfortunately not acted upon. Fourth, in order to offer quality education to every child, we must put resources where they are most needed. Equity isn't necessarily equal, and strict equality isn't necessarily fair. Our children and communities face a variety of obstacles and stresses that interfere with them offering, for communities, or taking advantage of, for children, a quality education. In order to offer quality education to every child, our state must acknowledge that schools need resources to counter those obstacles. And depending on the size and the nature of the obstacles, different schools, different communities, different children may require different levels of resources. We must act intelligently to address these in a systematic and humane way. And finally, fifth, which may be a bit of a challenge to some of us, we must commit to ending the constant chasing of the latest fad and set aside ideological driven notions of how education ought to function. K-12 education is a service provided by the public to the public, both because we have a moral duty to help every child fulfill their potential and because we know that the future of our communities depends on the investments we make in our children today. So we must not set policy or change policy arbitrarily or hastily, there's been altogether too much of that, both in Michigan and nationwide. Instead, we must shape a long-term policy guided by research and expertise that provides a stable foundation for our schools but can also meet the changing needs and the uncertainties of the future. We don't have a crystal ball. We have to be careful not to lock in policies or ideas or directions that will not address the fact that change is one of the few constants that we have to cope with. So those are our five kind of core ideas, and I think that, I hope, that if you think about them a little bit, you'll understand why we feel that these are really foundational thoughts that need to be worked through before we can start setting really intelligent policy. I know that much of what's been happening in the state hasn't originated in this room or in this building. Much of my work is down the mall a little bit. We, all of us, need to stop pushing to try and fix, a quick fix to perceive problems or predetermined notions of what's good or what isn't good, and to have an honest public discussion of what the public wants from the public's schools. We are owners, not customers. We don't always act like it, but we should. That's another mission of my organization, is to make sure that parents and other citizens begin to act like owners and step in and make a productive contribution to solving the problems and the direction.
Keep going.
I'm actually pretty much covered what I need to say, so I know that you're not offering to take questions right now, but if there's anything that I can answer later on or by email, I would later on or by email, I would be happy to do so. I commend the documents that I gave to you, including our presentation from last year, which has a lot of information in it and some citations. I hope that it's helpful, and I hope that we can continue a, a good dialogue on these issues as we go forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Steve, for being here. Appreciate your time and your comments. So we did hear from nine groups today. We have another fifteen or sixteen or so scheduled for next board meeting. In addition, other groups are submitting things in writing, and as I said, we are seeking input as we are going out, when department employees and myself are going out into school districts, communities, and meeting with different groups to continue to get input that will be part of the report that we'll be putting together and recommendation. So thank you for day one. I thank you for my first board meeting. I can't promise we'll always be several hours ahead, but it's, it's a good start. So with that, uh, we're not going to wait for my reception to start. We're just going to do it now, so have cake and punch before you leave.
I want to point a personal privilege before we adjourn.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. Well, I am very grateful and, and very pleased with the presentations that we had today. I, I think this was a very good strategy in your part to cultivate this atmosphere of unity, collaboration, and input. So I applaud you for that. Now, uh, we learned a lot of things today, but some of the highlights in my mind is that we want to work in a partisan manner.
Bipartisan.
Bipartisan.
Bipartisan. I want to make it clear that she meant bipartisan.
Absolutely. Thank you. Uh, yeah, bipartisan manner. Uh, I, I want to also say that we sit at this table with different voices, that we want to celebrate successes, and, and it's commendable. Uh, and we also said that we want effective teacher evaluations, and I have always said that the teachers are the heartbeat of any school district, so it's imperative that we cultivate this in, in this level of, of educators. Having said that, I come from the west side of the state. I am from Grand Rapids, Michigan, and, and I, I bring to the superintendent greetings from my side of the state. And in researching what to give you as you start your tenure as the superintendent of the state schools, I found out that there's many things that are made in our side of the state. So, uh...
Here, let's come up here and say, is this beer? Is this beer? We'll keep the beer in the bag.
Yeah, no, no, no beer. Lupe doesn't believe in beer.
Whiskey?
So we leave that one out. Tequila.
Strike that from the TV.
No. Okay. One of the things that, that are going to happen in the west side of the state, in Grand Rapids, is Art Prize. And, and so that's the first thing that I want to invite you to, uh, visit and enjoy in our part of the state. So Art Prize gave me a bag to give you, which contains a few items. Also, we have a place where coffee's made, and then there's, there's nuts and candies and all that. So each cup that was donated in this bag has some of those goodies. So in behalf of, of the west side of the state, and I, I will repeat over and over, we exist in the other side, and I want you to forget, or anybody in, in the room to forget that we are over there. And we promise and pledge that we will work side by side with you as we transform this state to have effective schools all over the state. So with that, give him a big round of applause.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And with that, we will adjourn.